So, Melissa, I went, I started the stream and it says end broadcast instead of stop streaming. So if you want to pause, if you, you end broadcast and then you can, it allows you to start it right from.
It's not going to go until seven o'clock probably.
Yeah, it won't show.
Maybe not, yeah.
Yeah, that won't show until you can stay alive or it's not going to show.
And then. Put that one over.
Brian, you had a jukebook at the main center and then the nail box is?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
Last half of the year is always the thickest.
I set up my desk and everything else and my files and things and the dining room table is still a disaster.
Oh my God.
So Joe hasn't complained yet.
I keep stuffing meal on boxes and all up at the end of the year.
Well, sometimes I'd like to go back to last year. What did we talk about last year in September or October?
Right.
So, you know, I know it's been about, but.
Oh, today's the fourteenth. I was gonna say, how come I had the last one is the seventh?
Natalie said she was coming tonight for her finances, but Gronk said he's the only one.
I thought we were doing, I thought we were doing just one of them, sorry.
Yeah, I thought Natalie said it was her turn first. I guess not, will never. She probably wasn't prepared. Her first turn first.
And Rod didn't prepare since July.
Yes.
So. Yeah.
That's cute.
That is true.
Do you need more chairs? What the heck's going on?
Oh, that's nice.
Thank you Diane for those bags.
Oh, you're welcome.
Do you need more chairs?
I'm trying to clean my house out. And I had those and I kept meaning to give them to you.
We get people that save bags and they save all of their plastic bags. Doesn't matter what they.
Do you need more chairs? The guy is special.
Hey everybody.
Hi John.
Hello.
Hey there.
Yes, yes I did.
Yeah, I will.
Melissa, do you still have the copy I just gave you back?
No, just do you need that?
No, that's okay.
I have, I have both copies you want.
No, I have it, but I had questions. I had no comp摟ing and this one I don't have the notes on. I believe.
And we're, Diane, we're probably not going to get real deep into the weeds with it tonight, the financial work too, because Nikki not being here tonight.
Okay.
But, you know, we'll go through it in case there's any questions or whatever, then Melissa can maybe answer them or at least get it ready for our next meeting. And I'll kind of go through that. What our plan is for next week. It's a possibility Nikki might not be here either. It just depends on how, so I can share a little bit more.
Sure. I'm good.
I was prepared to do that.
No, she's not a member of, yeah, there's no, yeah.
No, we haven't before.
We haven't, yeah. Okay.
I will mention.
She is a, although she is a clerk, so it's a court.
Whatever, if you want, you're there.
I don't think you have to, it's just, you know, just recognizing as it's unusual for her not to be.
Yeah. Are, at this time, do you want me to say one? I'm not going to say why, send her, just.
I want to see some of the stats and say what's chat about.
You want to see she has to take care of it? That's how she works. All right, 7:01. Good evening, everybody. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of Tuesday, October 14th, 2025 at 7:01 PM. We have pledge allegiance to the second idol, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Okay, roll call. Jennifer Allen.
Here.
Diane Canzoni.
Here.
Fred Nielsen.
Here.
Raymond Wieden.
Here.
Brian Spitznagle.
Here.
All of council present, along with our lossless, our John Montello, our street commissioner and zoning inspector, Rob Kalman, and our fiscal clerk, Melissa Sandberg. We also do have Ryan Keegan here from our HR partners, who is our HR consultant for the village, handles our HR issues. And also any benefit that the employees need assistance with. Nikki is our fiscal officer, is unable to make the meeting tonight. She has a family emergency that needed to be attended to. So we are going to still go through the finance update, maybe not get into it as deep as if Nikki was here. We do have Melissa here, who is pretty well versed in it too. And we also have Mr. Kalman here to give a little bit of, he was scheduled for night, tonight to go through the service departments, finances, and some capital. We'll probably just have a touch more on the capital. Ray, did you want to have a motion?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Colograph, members of council and all who are here tonight. As the mayor stated, Nicole Sell, our fiscal officer, who's also our clerk of council, is, can't be with us tonight. And I just thought it would be appropriate to just ask for an excuse, a motion to excuse Nicole Sell for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Second by Jennifer Allen. Vote on the motion, Jennifer Allen.
Yes.
Diane Canzoni.
Yes.
Fred Nielsen.
Yes.
Raymond Wieden.
Yes.
Brian Spitznagle.
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, item four, which is comments related to agenda items, we'll go through those. Does anybody have any comments at this time related to those? I thought maybe at this time we could bring Ryan up too, if that is okay to talk about the one item, or do you want to wait till we get to that item?
No, it's time now.
Okay. Ryan, did you want to come on up to the mic? At our last COW meeting, we talked about resolution, item D, resolution 2025-37, which is reemployment of OPRS retirees. We didn't have a policy in place. Ryan, along with Nicole, our lossless or myself, and you have put a policy in place. And we did review it last week at our COW meeting, and I know we mentioned there might be some questions if we could have Ryan here to address any of them. Or just kind of go over what he thinks about what we put together here since you probably did the most of it. It's a lot of a job. You want, Ryan, just kind of introduce yourself for the, for the residents and anybody watching our live stream.
Sure. My name is Ryan Keegan. I work with your partner in HR. We've been working with the city for quite some time now, I think, at least five years. And me specifically, I've been working with the city for about a year. So really enjoy working with everybody and, you know, that's a little bit about me, so.
You want to touch base a little bit on this, what we have there? I mean, we didn't have anything in place. I know we've had some employees that have inquired about it. So we, as, as administration and council, we felt we needed to get something in place. And I know you did quite a bit of research when it relates to OPRS and also John tying it in with our existing ordinance. Unless anybody has any questions related to it for Ryan or?
Ryan speak first, I would agree that way.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure.
You may answer questions before we get?
Yeah, just try to put it simply here. The, putting a process around this was, was the goal. And, you know, the big item with this is not necessarily the employee's relationship with the city, but the employee's relationship with OPERS. So if they are a benefit recipient, essentially with OPERS, there's just a process that needs to be put in place in order for that employee to continue to receive benefits from OPERS, or if there are benefits offered from the city and vice versa, essentially for that. And with the, the policy on exhibit A, you know, this objective was just identified as those specific requirements that any employee receiving benefits from OPERS needs to do. You know, whether that's, you know, from communication to essentially receiving an approval from OPERS and so on and so forth, outlined in the policy here. You know, different levels of employees have different requirements, you know, whether they're an elected official or whether they are essentially just an agent service retiree, and all of that essentially is outlined there. As far as the resolution, I think John was the one that helped kind of finalize and put this together in terms of what that employee would be brought back as, in terms of the level of pay, in terms of, you know, their seniority and so on and so forth. So all of that essentially was done by John. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, Brian, did you, is this like out of the OPERS playbook, if you will?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Thank you for doing this for us. We've been looking at this for a while and so it's much, much appreciated. First of all, I'm looking at this from the perspective of, and maybe, please correct me if I'm wrong, of not only hiring somebody that we know that works for the village that we may want to rehire, but I'm assuming this is applicable for anybody that retired under OPERS, whether they worked for the village or not, and they saw a job opening here in the village and we wanted to hire that person, but they're already, already retired.
Yeah, that is correct. So anybody that essentially is receiving a benefit from OPERS, whether they are a former employee with the city or not, would qualify under that because they are receiving a benefit from OPERS.
Okay, so based on that, under the general provisions section, the bullet number two, bullet point number two, if you have that. And this is just a wording thing, and I play devil's advocate and probably to my detriment sometimes. But retirees must inform the village of Walton Hills that they are receiving OPERS pension, receiving an OPERS pension benefit upon reemployment. And I'm thinking about the person coming from outside. Of course, we would know if we're rehiring Rob Kalman or somebody else. Should that somehow be changed to indicate that they should advise us of that during the application process?
That would be probably a good recommendation as well, absolutely. You know, if we want to encompass this for all OPERS benefits recipients. At this point, this would just be, you know, the policy on reemployment of anybody that retired with the city. But if it needs to be adjusted, you know, to be all encompassed.
Yeah, see, that's why I, that's why I asked. Does this cover just employees of the village or anybody that retires throughout the state with OPERS?
Yeah, so if, if somebody is receiving an OPERS benefit already and they were working for a different city or a different municipality, whatever that is, I mean, they still would have that requirement to communicate to OPERS. You know, regardless if the city has a policy in place for that. Now, as far as if we want to revisit that and put in some more generalized verbiage to just have it say everybody, that's absolutely easily done.
Well, also, if I may, the reason why I'm stating that also is two, two places down here. One, in public notice and hearings, which is the second bullet point, a question that I have is, should that bullet, that bullet point covers a generality, not, I believe, not public notice and hearings for someone that's an elected official? I think that, if I'm reading that correctly, it says the village must notify OPERS by the end of the retiree's first month of employment. Failure to provide OPERS with timely notice of reemployment will result in employer liability for any overpaid pension benefits. So we are liable if they don't, or if we don't know, even if we don't know about it, that's how I read that. They don't advise us that they are an OPERS recipient. There's also another section in here on the second page under notification and compliance. The village is responsible for notifying OPERS by the end of the first month of employment or contracted services. Failure to notify OPERS may result in the village being liable for any overpaid pension benefits. So there's two places in there that we are liable as a village if, if for some reason they just don't read it, you know, and they, not that they're doing anything malicious. Just falls through the cracks or whatever. My general question is, not only that, the first question, but should we just add a question to our application? Our general application that states basically, are you or will you be an OPERS recipient upon employment with the village? And they can check yes or no, and that way at least we know. And that's, I'm just throwing this out.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a good idea or not.
I'm not saying that's, yeah, that's, that's a good point. As far as an employment application goes, I would shy away from that because we wouldn't want the city to be potentially held liable for a applicant that is receiving a benefit that we are essentially shying away from because of that benefit, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, but if we are liable for notifying them, or OPERS, then I, if, if OPERS is putting a liability on us because of that, I would think that that would be an admissible question. Because we're, we're on the hook.
It, so yes, but not necessarily on the application of employment. I mean, that could be done after the employee has been, or the city has decided that an employee is hired.
Okay, so after hiring, excuse me.
So after hiring, not necessarily on an employment application.
So on an intake, maybe a questionnaire on an intake?
Correct.
Okay, I, I, just as long as we have some documentation where that person.
Correct, yeah.
Check yes or no. I mean, I just saw liability.
Yeah, no, and, and I don't disagree with that, you know, I, I see your points. You know, but as it comes down to, I guess, equal opportunity employment hiring, you know, we wouldn't want to put something in place that would make the city liable to make an employment decision.
Sure.
Based on something that is more of a pre-employment item rather than a post-hire.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, that makes sense. And we can do that. Anybody else have any questions for?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Ryan.
On public notices and hearings, number two, we have to have a public meeting here at council. If they're 15 to 30 days before reemployment, what would be the purpose of that if we're already hiring that person?
So that would be, yeah, so that would be for anybody that is filled from a vote of members or a board. So it's, it's a high, it's not necessarily an agent service hire. It's for, you know, a position that was voted on by a board. So that responsibility would be on the city to essentially announce that and put a public hearing for anybody potentially to dispute that decision. So for a random, you know, let's just say like, you know, somebody that works for the city in service or, you know, anybody that's not elected official or somebody that's voted in from the board, that wouldn't apply to that person.
Okay, my other question was about council approving their rehire. We have to have, council has to approve it? It was right here in page one, section two. It says approved by council. That each employee considered for rehire shall be approved by council upon terms negotiated with the employee subject and said policy.
So that would be on the resolution, correct? Section two. So that would be with, I think John made that piece.
Just Mayor, basically, it's just, you know, we thought you'd want to be involved with the, you know, decision, so that's why we put that in there. I mean, normally you wouldn't be involved with that decision, but, you know, the mayor felt he wanted to be transparent and have councils' inputs as to. But it's not legally required, but it's whatever you desire. If you don't want to, if you'd rather just leave it up to the administration, the mayor, to do the hiring and the recommendation, so be it. It's up to you guys.
Yep, and I, I agree with that as well. You know, just transparency, I think that's, you know, better than not in any circumstance. And especially around, you know, a, an employee that retires and then we want to rehire them as a city. I think the council, you know, should have a say in that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I, I fully agree with that and I would trust the mayor to hire without our input. He's got my full trust and he's earned it.
Right.
It's not given, it's earned. But he wanted to specifically put that in there to involve us, and I think that's a great, great thing. So, and it also involves the public because we have to talk about it and vote on it. So everybody's aware. There's nothing behind closed doors that's, could be seen as shady, to be quite frank.
Okay.
Any other, go ahead. Do you have something?
Oh yes, Mayor, Colograph, Ryan. I have a question regarding, and I don't want to misquote what you said, but I think you said in the beginning that this, this res, this policy is more so about the employee's relationship with OPERS and not the relationship with the employer. However, being that the employer would be the one that's rehiring and then the first, whereas on the resolution talks about establishing guidelines for the reemployment of OPERS retirees, as well as in exhibit A, the objective talks about establishing guidelines. So is that, the guidelines piece, is that a piece that you will work with the mayor and perhaps John in terms of the actual employer, employee relationship? I know, I know there's a little piece in here that talks about forfeiting seniority.
Yeah.
And then my, because my general question, my key question is, this can happen multiple times and we know that all employees do not perform as the same as others. And, and, and to, I think it's important to have some types of guidelines that doesn't make it appear that it's just a guaranteed. If I retire, rehire, there, there has to be some guidelines in terms of, perhaps maybe qualifications might not be the right word. So is, is that something that you works with, you will work with the mayor on the, how do we?
Yes, yeah, so between myself and the mayor, you know, if there's any questions or, you know, the mayor working with his specific directors as well. I mean, there would be a collaboration involved with this. I mean, you know, as far as an employee is concerned, if they want to retire, I mean, that is their right to do that, right? So, but after they retire, it is also the employer's right to not pursue rehiring that individual, you know, based on whatever circumstance might be, might be at hand. So, I, so does that kind of answer your question?
It, it does, and, and, and my, my, I guess my concern is that rehiring one is one thing. Not rehiring a second, it could be something different unless there is some type of criteria that kind of substantiates why one is and why one isn't. You don't want it just to be a very subjective yes/no kind of a thing. That's, that's what I'm kind of.
Correct, yeah, it definitely wouldn't be a yes/no. There would be a collaboration on that, you know. I mean, there's a lot of criteria that could be involved, whether that's the employee's performance or, you know, I mean, I mean, that's just, you know, one small little snippet there of what potentially could be. But, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, it comes down to, you know, if we have an employee that's requesting to essentially retire so they can start gaining that benefit from OPERS, you know, if they, they're, if they're allowed to do that, yes, that's their route and that's what they are choosing to do. As far as the city's concerned, you know, that's where we put in these little policies in place, you know, making sure, okay, well, you know, you are going to be getting a benefit from OPERS, so if you're choosing to do that, this is the course that we're going to take as the city. You know, we have to essentially retire, rehire, you know, and then we have to essentially follow this piece, you know, it's going to be collaborated on, council's going to approve it. So, you know, that, that's those little checks and balances essentially. I mean, it's not going to stop essentially an employee from retiring, but it will, you know, put some guardrails around that same employee wanting to come back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Um, there is, under the policy, general provisions, a line that was put in saying the village is not obligated to rehire retired employees.
Correct.
So it's spelled out there. It's the third item for the employees to know.
I, I think, and if you touch base on it, with the part of tying the legislation with it and coming before council for a vote. So now you, besides, let's say if it was a, a service worker and you have me, Rob, and, and Ryan weighing in on it, it also comes before council and we would probably have an executive session to discuss that individual employee. And, you know, every, every case is based on there, on that, on that performance too. That's a big part of it, so that's why that's in there. So I think the checks and balances with coming before council is, is important. Now you're bringing it in front of five more people for that.
Mr. Mayor, one more question, please. This ordinance or resolution and, it's a resolution, right?
Resolution.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, this resolution and the policy, will these, if passed, will these be included in the employee handbook? The actual handbook that they receive so they can see it? As opposed to, we pass things all the time, resolutions and ordinances, and they kind of get off. And, and these are two different documents and just as you discussed about council approval, you know, the OPERS thing doesn't say anything about being rehired at the, at, that being negotiated and at you lose your seniority. It doesn't say anything about that. So if this is passed, I would like to see this information included in the employee handbook so they can, every employee can see it. They know what's going on. handbook, so they can, every employee can see it, they know what's going on, right? I don't know if that's a good idea or not.
No, it's a good idea. Whether we put the whole thing in or we reference the resolution with the exhibit would be the same. So they could see that in the handbook, and then they can always ask Ryan, or Nikki, or Melissa, or Mary to take a look at that specific resolution. But we could, whether we put the whole thing in or reference it, we could do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
I see no, nothing wrong. What do you, what's your opinion on that, Ryan?
So... I, I, I don't disagree, you know, with putting it in the employee handbook, I think it could be, you know, whether that's a reference to it or not. You know, as far as certain policies and procedures, some of those probably don't make handbooks, but they are included maybe on the city, you know, the ordinances and charters, right? So there's a lot of things that can be referenced, whether that's in the employee handbook or, you know, in the charter or city ordinances, so it really, is that right? Sorry. So, I mean, at, at the end of the day, what it comes down to is it's up to the mayor to, to make that decision, you know, and if the mayor wants to do that, I have no problem putting it in the handbook, you know, in some form or fashion.
There's a lot there, so we can reference it.
Yeah, that sounds like a great idea.
Any other questions for?
Mr. Chairman?
I, let me, I'll get to things once, so you, are you?
I'm good.
Just a comment, and that is, you know, I think someone had mentioned about trusting the mayor's judgment, that's fine. However, mayors change, and, you know, when, when council is considering a policy, we have to make sure that this policy passes on, so it's not necessarily about the judgment of the current mayor, it's the policy has to be able to stand, you know, through time, since we, that, that's all, just a general comment.
No, right, and, and, you know, we're doing the right thing, we need a policy in place, employee inquires about it, it makes our job a lot easier, we have something we can reference, and it's clear cut, and, you know, we'll do what's right and what's fair to everyone, whether it's the village and the employees, so, so I'm glad we're, got it in front of us. Any other questions from council? Jeff?
I was just going to say, basically treating employees just like you would a, a appointed position, so we're kind of carrying that over where, where it wasn't traditionally, you know, council's call, now we're saying it is, so that's, that's, it's okay to do it that way.
Any, anybody else? Okay, then I'm going to open it up. Any resident? Jeff, you got to come up to the mic unfortunately. Yeah, 'cause we record it, and they do minutes, and they put down your comments in the minutes, so.
Be careful.
Yeah, just state your name and.
Watch your step.
My question is, Jeff, on, on Spanker Stride, my question is for the gentleman who just made the presentation, the governor and some legislators have ordered the reorganization of all the public employee retirement funds, it's been widely covered in the Plain Dealer and elsewhere, and I wondered if municipalities, including villages, have any input into this reorganization?
I, we, we don't, as, we have input as members of that, everybody up here is, is paid through the village, and the village contributes to OPRS, so we do receive proxies, and the OPRS does have a board and appointed officials, and...
Do we have any input with the board or any of the appointed officials?
Not as a, not as a community, but as members of being, I, I pay to OPRS.
Sure.
So I receive a newsletter, I get a proxy.
Okay, so the village itself doesn't have individuals too?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think so, yes, sir. We could certainly, well.
Did, yeah, come on up, Jeff.
Jeffrey Alexander, Southern 312 Walton. I'm not, I think I know what this means, the OPERS, is that like, I know Joe Barr retired from Bedford, came here as chief, now is that how, under, is that what he came under?
Jeff, I'm not sure, his individual, his specific.
Different, the police are different.
Ohio Police and Fire are a little different.
Okay, all right, well, okay, and I'll just say, on the service department, if a person retires, and they get rehired under this, do they come back without benefits?
No, they don't, if you read what we have in place, and Ryan, maybe you can help me out so I make sure I'm correct, what we have, they come back, they do lose their seniority, but OPRS, OPERS specifically says that the, the village offers benefits to other employees, we have to offer it to them. Is that correct, Ryan? At least from what I have read?
Yes.
Did I state that correct? So, because if we did hire an employee retired, and we have the option to rehire them.
Right.
It's in the policy. If we did rehire them, because we do offer for that position benefits, we are, we have to offer that person those benefits. What we do have in there, they would lose their seniority and start off as, but we do have leeway as far as how we pay them and stuff, just like with any new hire, they're considered basically a new hire, we can start a based on seniority, or where we feel their knowledge would be, is, am I speaking to that correct, Ryan? It's nice to have your HR person with you, and, and, and the important part about that is I'm not an HR person, and we have Ryan, who is our, an expert in that, and has been doing it a long time.
So, in some cases, it would prevent a new hiring off the street to come in, how many, is there a limit of how many rehires you would have? Say there's a group of five workers, how many of those would you have before you run out of the, you know, if you use that policy? Would they all, would you end up having more rehires than full-time people that?
Well, they, Ryan, did you want to answer that? I, I think, Jeff, what you're, I don't, you could, everybody could, if no one, if everybody retired, and, and we wouldn't have that because of the age difference we have in our employees, but there's no limit on it. Like, Ryan, there's nothing that says you can't do it or anything.
Mayor?
There's no difference in, in what you pay, whether you hire somebody else, whoever is rehired, we have to contribute to OPRS.
Okay.
All our employees besides the, the police.
I thought maybe they didn't as rehiring.
No.
I, I heard that sometimes you come back as a private contractor.
I use that too.
Well, people, you, well, villages use that too, but we, we're not using, we haven't used that here.
All right.
We have used it, I have used, former employees have hired as a 1099.
Okay, that's what I was trying to ask, okay, all right, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Anybody else have any? Jennifer, did you want to add something?
No, Rob was.
Oh, my comment, thank you.
Well, if you want to add something, as a director, Rob, I, I value your opinion too, because certainly if it's one of your employees, you're going to be no different than any, if an employee wants to retire, retire and rehire, their direct report is going to have the biggest input.
Now, we, I just wanted to make the comment that we don't run a risk of that in my department, of having five individuals retire and rehire, that's all.
The, the thing is, if we did, we have a policy in place that addresses it. So that's, that's what, that's what we want, to have instead of just us, you know, not giving some good direction, in the right direction, now we have it. Any other questions related to that item, resolution twenty, twenty-five dash thirty-seven? Okay, Ryan, you're more than welcome to stay, if you have somewhere to go, whatever, unless anybody has any more questions for Ryan, we appreciate it. I know we, Rob's going to go through his, but I know we do have some residents that came here to present something, thanks, Ryan. Is everybody okay with having them go right now?
Mm-hmm.
So they wouldn't have to wait till, because the meeting might be kind of lengthy. So are you here to present something? Well then, state your name and tell us, tell us why you're here.
My name is Judy Cicero, and before I tell you a little bit about wannabe writers of Walton Hills, I'm going to tell you a little bit about me and Walton Hills. My mom and dad and I moved here in nineteen fifty-six, and we moved onto Meadow Park Drive before there was a south and a north Meadow Park Drive. I went to Bedford High School, and when I graduated from high school and went to college, the women's club sent me a check for fifty dollars for my books. I didn't ask for it, I didn't apply for it, and they just did it. In the second semester of my freshman year, my father had a serious heart attack, and Walton Hills Police came and took him to Suburban Hospital. Over the next four years, he was admitted to Suburban many times, many times, and the police always took my mom and me to Suburban Hospital. My dad died four years later, and we had police escorted to the cemetery. I have very, oh, the most important thing, I now live on North Meadow Park Drive, because there is a South Meadow Park Drive. I went away for a while, but I'm back. What I wanted to tell you about wannabe writers of Walton Hills is, I'm a writer, and I wanted to get a group together, because I've always been in a writer's group, so in the beginning of January two thousand twenty-four, six people came and wanted to be a part of the wannabe writers. The idea was not to teach writing to them, the idea was to increase their imagination, to increase their skills, and ultimately, to put together a book, and that's what we're here about tonight. And the book is entitled The Wannabe Writers of Walton Hills, and I've put some posters up, so you can see on the back, there's the sign of Walton Hills, and our book is a combination of poetry and short stories. These are fantastic writers, and we've come together, we meet weekly, and tomorrow I should get the final mock copy from the printer to give them approval to go ahead. So I wanted to let you know what we're about, we're seeking some assistance, but that's all I wanted to let you know, was about my group and my affection for Walton Hills. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Carol.
My name is Carol Weisman, seventy-one eighty-one Conley Boulevard. I'm the treasurer of wannabe writers. Number one, we appreciate the village's support, the meeting place for our weekly, year-round classes, and the friendly staff, Natalie, Ronnie, and Mary. We are putting our own money in to get our book published, we are recruiting patron sponsors to also provide funds, we are asking for some funding from the village, it will cost sixteen hundred fifty dollars for the printing and binding of one hundred books. We already have sixty-five pre-order book sales, and I have written five hundred thirty-five in patron donations, but just found out tonight, we've got another fifty. We hope to print a hundred more soon after the first printing, and our request is based on our observation of Young's Park pickleball courts, remote control car track, playgrounds, and ball fields, and the other recreation department activities, realizing that residents pay out of pocket for certain activities. And we will donate a portion of any profit to the Walton Hills Benevolent Fund.
Yeah, Carol, I, I think what's important, because we've had some, me and you have had some direct discussions, but there's been some emails, I know Mr. Montello talked to you, kind of, and, and we could talk about that tonight. What we received, and you tell me, what, what you were asking for us is to put, use our, the village's letterhead to seek donations.
Well, I, I've been advised that that's not going to happen.
Oh, okay, okay, so that's.
I understand, I understand that that's off the table.
Okay, okay, so we're not, it's not.
So what I'm asking for tonight is just some funding, you know, we're, we're taking it out of our pocket, we're asking patrons, and if, if the village can assist us in any way, we would appreciate it.
We are also giving that to the Walton Hills Benevolent Fund.
If we make anything.
So it's not going to go to any profit for the individual writers.
Okay, well, let me, just, and, and John, I probably have, he can clean it up for me if he needs to, and if Nikki was here, she could probably explain it the best, because our fiscal officer, she is ultimately responsible for, she's bonded and sure responsible for how our funds, and along with all of us, including myself and, and council here and John, on how these public funds are spent, okay? And we can't, as much as we probably would love to just give you a donation for that, we can't allow, we can't allow a group to manage our money, okay? It all has to go through the fiscal office, you know, like you say, you're going to give some of the portions, like who's managing that? We can't take, give money to a resident for them to manage something, okay? It all has to come through our, our fiscal officer, and they have to manage it all, okay? And I would share with Carol, a good example is the Lake Club. We don't give a donation to the Lake Club. Years ago, they used to, and auditing and rules that govern public entities, municipalities, whether the rules are from the county, the state, or federal, have said, you can buy a service, and that's what we do with the Lake Club. We have a contract with them, and we buy a service, because we're allowed to buy a service. We can't give a donation to, we can't take public funds and spend it on a private entity. That's just, that's just the law. As much as we would want, want to, I can't authorize that, neither, neither can, can council. You know, and like you mentioned, the pickleball courts, well, those are on village property, they're a place where anybody can go, no one's managing those pickleball courts, except out of our, our rec department, which are employees who report and give any funds, there's no funds collected, but if there were, they go right to the fiscal officer. Funds from the event center, they have to go right to the fiscal officer, the fiscal officer manages those and accounts for those. We don't allow anybody outside of the village manage our funds, because we're not allowed to. I don't know, you know, John can do a little more research on it and give an opinion, but I don't know if there's any way, any other way, or if there is, and it's not because we don't want to, that would be the, the furthest thing from us, it's what we're legally bound and allowed to do. That's what you have to understand, go, go ahead.
Yeah, Mayor Colograph, I have a question, thank you very much for, for this, this work and this presentation, I actually, it's three questions. One is how does, how can individuals become a patron? Two is how, how, what is the process to pre-order a book and the cost to pre-order a book?
I have my receipt book tonight, or anybody could, um, what do we have, oh, on the, the flyers, on the flyers, since I'm the treasurer, and it would be made out to wannabe writers of Walton Hills.
Okay.
In care of me, or actually Judy would bring it to the meeting, anybody could bring it to the meeting.
You have, you have the order form as well? I think that's the, that's the best way is, is get, get the word out. I think that's the, that's the best way is, is get, get the word out that there's pre-order available, and.
Well, we have pre-order.
Okay. Let's get this word out.
Or did it just one of those, make some copies after the? How, are you done, Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Are, are these books for sale?
They're for sale.
And how much are they?
Ten figures, we don't know yet. Because we don't know how many patron ads we're gonna get. And because we're investing some of our own money, some of us are willing to take a loss to sell the book to keep it reasonable, which you can't operate a business like that forever. So, you know, we're gonna keep trying to get patron ads. But we don't know exactly. I think to answer your question, sixteen hundred fifty for a hundred, we were reluctant to take, you know, you can bring the price down if you order more, but we were less willing to take a bigger risk, because we don't know how many we're gonna sell.
Right, right.
Thank you.
I just got the page count this morning. A hundred and fifty-four pages, it'll be glossy covered, it'll be perfect volume. This is not just a little something.
And Judy, I don't know if you made it clear, that's the front of our book, and that's the back of our book.
That's really nice.
She had those made up for, if we do a meet and greet, you know, to try to sell it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Diane.
Carol, I, as you know, I got to see a little sneak peek of some of the stories. I didn't read any from start to finish, but they are very touching. I mean, whether they're happy, sad, things in the village, your personal stories. I mean, I really find it very interesting. Of course, I'm a reader and wannabe writer. So I would definitely, you know, I wouldn't, I would donate. I'd definitely, as a person, as a resident, I would donate, and I would probably buy one of the books also. But I wouldn't want my name in there, I don't, I, I wouldn't be a patron like a business or something. I mean, how would you be doing that?
Well, you know, we could always do anonymous, but right now, because we wanna get the book printed, we're not gonna have the patrons in the book.
Okay.
We're gonna have to insert, and for instance, you know, we could just go with Diane Cantrell, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Walton Hill. Or if you just would like to be anonymous, either or. We're not selling, advertising as such. Although having your name there as a business or company that could get contracts in Walton Hills, it wouldn't hurt. But we're not having, you know, ads.
Well, usually when I donate to the Lake Club, or Owl, or Women's Club, or whatever, I don't, I tell them anonymous, okay?
We'll do what anybody wants.
Okay. But, I mean, it's definitely, I, I find it remarkable in such a short period of time that you've been able to have everybody together as such a wonderful group.
Thank you. I, I do like to tell everybody of my friends, we laugh, we cry, we read our pieces. And Judy's degree, PhD, is in social work. And it was only about two classes in, and I said, this is like a support group. But we, we have fun.
Very nice.
Yeah, I, I didn't need to, certainly not. I just wanted to be very transparent, and I don't wanna give an impression of something and then not follow through with that, or leave you out there wondering, or, or anything, you know, wondering why something happens here or happens there. We're here to answer any of those questions. Because what we do for one group, we wanna do for everybody. You know, we're, we were happy, you know, you approached Natalie and put a group together, and, you know, we'd love it if there was something going on at that facility right now as, as we talk. The more it's used, the more, you know, the more benefits everybody. Because you get four people here, six people here, not everybody wants to do the same thing. Not everybody wants to go to the pickleball. Maybe some people wanna be wannabe writers. Some people wanna do line dancing. The more a community offers, the more viable it is. And, and I thank you for, for, you know, putting this together and being a part of it. And anything we can do as a village, like a room, or, you know, stuff like that, those things that we can do, we certainly will do. You know, if Mr. Montello looks at it, and there's some way or an avenue that allows it, something different, we certainly would let you know and change that. Just, just him taking a, a look at it along with discussing with our fiscal officer a little bit. And I know John had an opinion for something similar that happened in Bedford from the Attorney General, but it's been a while. So he kinda referenced that and used that as his basis to, like, but doesn't mean we're not gonna look to see if we can. The fortunate thing is, things get tighter as it goes on. Just like you mentioned, I don't think you'll see somebody, a policeman taking somebody to the hospital anymore. What a, you know, just talk about going back in time a little bit, you know.
I do remember Suburban Hospital, though.
Yeah, it's still there, it's still open.
It's still called a different name, right?
So.
Is it called Suburban stuff?
So, just the old people that work there.
Yeah, that was the only place, that was the only place to go back to.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, Carol. Anybody have any other questions for?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jennifer.
I would appreciate it if John would look into it, because we did pay for the Women's Club phone treat one year.
No, we didn't. I don't think we did.
I thought we did out of a NOPEC grant. Or did that get vetoed then by John? I don't, I remember them coming for us. But if John can look into it. But as the wannabe writers, if you guys could get in touch with somebody who might be involved with the Owl, that could be something put into potpourri for you, so the residents know. And they could possibly, you know, residents could get in touch with you then to make donations and stuff. Just if you happen to know anyone there.
The Owl's a good example. We, when we, the journal was started with the former administration, and then we were looking, there was, it's very important, we wanted them both coexist. So we do put our police blotter in there, and we pay for those pages, okay? That's just how, that, it's not a donation. The agreement is they print our, our, our pages, and we pay for them, no different than if you wanted to advertise in the Owl, you have to pay for that. So the village pays for that, just like anybody else, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Jennifer? And, because some of those discussions took place too, because people like the journal, but people like the Owl. Most people like both of them. And we all know the Owl has a longstanding history of the village, and it's, it's kind of one of those things that makes our community special. You know, it's, it's kind of like heritage type thing, and I'm sure you can relate to that. They both serve their purpose, and, and we've been able to have them both coexist and put out different things. So now they're not a repeat of each other, so it's, it's worked out well. Anybody else have anything to add to that? And as John looks into it, we'll let you know, and if anybody has any questions, or something changes. And I, I'm interested in being a sponsor too, or whatever. I don't think you're gonna have a problem doing that. And I have no problem, we did it when the Kasingers with the Historical Society, they put a book together. And they would come to a lot of the events, or the Women's Club events, if we had something like Veterans Day or Memorial Day, you know, certain things, or I'm sure we, Natalie, senior lunch, to have the wannabe writers there, and, and, you know, have their book, and, and just see if anybody would be interested in that. Those are the things the village definitely can help with, you know, and would be glad to help with. And I think, I think you probably, you know, a lot of people go to the senior lunch, or any other activities that you feel are appropriate. You know, Memorial Day might, you know, just, you, you guys know, you know. And, and we definitely would support that. I think everybody feels that way, and Consul here.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Karen Rimming stated that since the Rains Ingersoll wrote a book about our village, contact her about any questions.
You guys know Karen Rimming? She's saying contact Karen Rimming?
No, she's saying contact Rains Ingersoll. Karen Rimming said.
Oh, Rains Ingersoll.
Mm-hmm. I can tell you, as a established group for a year in the village, I can offer you a free page in the Owl. And unfortunately, the deadline is the fifteenth, but if you could get me something by the end of the week, it would be included in November's.
I get it, it's done, it's worked.
Okay.
You're writers, you should be able to whip that thing out.
You're welcome.
Plus, you're getting some publicity tonight. So if anybody wants to know anything about it, they could go to YouTube and.
There's all the money back there.
Ask Word of Mail to check too.
Does anybody have anything else they wanna add for the wannabe writers? Did you wanna add, okay, we're good with the wannabe writers for now? If anything comes up, you're free to ask any questions during the meeting. We're very open. Any other residents, did you have something, Dave, that you wanted to speak? Yeah, you can come to the mic. What's that?
This is one of the wannabe writers.
Okay.
Okay. My name is David Basso. I live on one eighty-eight seventeen Delwood Drive. I'm gonna do my best here, because I don't talk too much in front of people. I mean, I sometimes have trouble communicating. It's about feeding deer. And the individual that lives across the street from me, we had deer in our yard, but after a few years he moved in, he just kept feeding them. It gets so, it's so bad now, that he feeds them in the morning, and his wife, it's him and his wife, and he feeds them in the evening. This morning, I almost, fifteen deer and better was in, in my yard going across. I have a dog, and it's my therapy dog. We go out and we walk in our driveway, in our yard. It's hard to avoid the poop and come in my house, that's not sanitary. It's getting carried too far. And the individual, the women live around him, and they're scared of him. But I, I've just about had it, because I had construction done to my house to take care of the water, and I have to zone off the, the area I put grass on, because it's costing me a lot of money, okay? And I don't know why, when he feeds the deer, he's got a police flag flying. Feeds the deer, he puts the blue lights on. Last week, he was on vacation, had a big bonfire in the back. I don't know how the neighbors didn't, and he put the blue light on. I don't know if he signifies that the police are gonna be okay with him. But this is too much, fifteen deer, feed in the morning and in the evening. I looked at the Ohio's ordinance, and it says, communities can control it. I looked at the, the ordinance for Walton Hills, six eighteen, number three. It says nuisance animals. It's an unsanitary situation that I have to walk in that poop and go in my house with my dog and spread it in the carpet. And when you figure, it goes anywhere from five to ten to fifteen. This morning, he had fifteen walking across your property. When he feeds them, it's probably not enough, he'll, they'll come back across the properties and eat and poop. And that, that, that's gone too far. It, it was adding, when, I don't know if you're familiar with Mr. Belicky, when he passed away, I used to talk with him when we were in, I met him in the park. And it broke my heart, because I didn't know how to deal with him and his wife. This was a few years ago. When they asked me if they could write a, should write a letter to him and ask him, because he was, he was destroying their property and their thing. But I don't like to push myself on other people. I don't wanna start, I didn't give them an opinion, because I don't want them to do something that I wouldn't do. So I didn't, but now it's, it's out of hand. It just totally, fifteen deer, you know, in the morning, she'll feed them, in the evening, he'll feed them. Puts a blue light, I, it just, it's too much. I shouldn't have to walk in dog poop and bring it. Your home is supposed to be where you have a quality of life. We got deer, when I first moved in, even the deer now. I don't worry about the flowers, I take care of them. But I worry about the poop coming in my house. And that, that's, and the grass. I paid a landscaper to come in and take care of the landscape, because I had, did waterproof around the house. I got, if you go by my property, you see these big stakes with string around, because they totally wiped it out. You can imagine, anywhere from five to fourteen deer walking through, times four, but the hooves do it. It, it's just too much. I mean, he, he doesn't, I've talked to the women, and they, they don't like it either, but they're, they're women, and, and I, I understand. But I've, I've had it, I don't think, other, other communities don't allow it. Fifteen deer, anywhere from five up, it's too much. I'm sorry. And that's, that's all I ask, maybe Walton Hill will tell me, you can't do that. You know, you gotta respect their neighbor to a certain extent. He has, so that's what I gotta say. I don't know if you're gonna do anything, but there is something, like I say, on six eighteen of your ordinance, number three. It's, it's sanitary, and it's about animals, so you shouldn't have to walk in poop. My dog and I, that's all we have, we walk outside. She's a therapy dog for me. And if you talk to any of the policemen in this city, or even the city people, they'll tell you, they always see me out in my yard. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Anybody wanna add anything to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just very briefly, I, I, we did put something out a while ago in the, in the journal, because we had another complaint. I believe it was in Barkley Estates, actually, but I'm not sure, because it's irrelevant. And most people, maybe, maybe we could put that in a future article, again, reprint it. I, I did a lot of research on ordinances and things like that, and, and not only that, but on the health of the deer. And a lot of people feed deer, and they think they're doing good by the deer, and they're doing the complete opposite. They're feeding them things that they think are good, but it'll, it'll literally kill them. Bread, corn, food items that will fill them up, but they're not nutritious at all. So they end up, they literally end up starving, and they're full. Their, their bellies are full when they find them dead. So as you said, you're, you know, they, they are creating a nuisance when they're attracting ten, fifteen, or more deer in their yard. We have plenty of them around here to begin with, let alone having to attract them. So maybe another education piece would be worthy, I don't know. Maybe we can, you know, some people read the journal, some people read the Owl, and, and don't read any other thing. Maybe we can put something in the Owl, too, pay the Owl to publish that. But I agree with you.
Go ahead, come on up, Dave, if you wanna give further comment.
Yes, David Basso, one eighty-eight seventeen Delwood Drive. Yeah, I've got the Owl. You're telling the people what to feed them. I don't care what you wanna feed them. I don't want the poop in my house, it's unsanitary. That's what the ordinance says. Don't tell them what to feed them. They're not supposed to feed that many, that's more than what they should feed. What does Brixville do? I used to look at, what does Independence do? What do all these other communities do? That is going way overboard, and it's getting out of hand. Fifteen deer, anywhere from five up, you wanna walk through that? I mean, as my wife would say, what would it be by your house? What would it be by your house if you walked in, brought the poop in, and your, your dog would, kind of, you go in there, you're up in age, and all you have is your therapy dog, walk out of your yard? And you think, you try to avoid the poop, and you bring it in house? What would you do? Ask yourself that. This is America. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on, on that, or anything else, before we move on to the legislation? And what's, what else is on our agenda? Okay? We're gonna start with item A, which is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twelve, authorizing issuance of notes in the amount of not to exceed one million six hundred fifty-five thousand in anticipation of the insurance of bonds. I know we did talk about this, we, in our last COW meeting, we did have Matt Stowinski here, our financial consultant, who talked about it. We didn't feel we needed him today. There were some things, that, some tweaking that was made. We can also talk about it next week before, but we did, we need to get that passed. So if there was any questions relating, that maybe John can't answer, or Melissa, and we need to get to Matt, in Nikki's absence, we can do that and get it back to everybody. I think everything we talked about has been, you know, addressed. So I think we're pretty good with where we're at, unless everybody has anything.
No.
We would ask for suspension, too, in the next council meeting for that. Okay. Any questions from any residents, if anybody was watching the live stream? Okay, we'll move on to resolu, item B, Resolution 2025-37, the reemployment of OPR's retirees. Good night, Jack.
Good night.
Night.
We, I don't know if we need to go, we pretty much addressed that with Ryan. Everybody's pretty good with that. I'll put that on the next meeting, due for suspension. Everybody's good with that, okay? Uh, we do have item C, which is Resolution 2025-39, authorizing mayor to enter into a contract with municipal collection association of America. This is something, I'll let John speak to. It's relating to collection on the camera tickets that people don't pay. I know it's something that you and Suzanne have worked on. I'll let you talk to that. I don't think it's, we could put it on for first reading if we needed to correct. Or is there, I'll let you talk to John, or is there some urgency? I know you could meet with the court over there, discuss those things along with Suzanne.
Yes, sir. Basically, that, you know, this is the same collection company that Newburgh Heights uses, and the judge has streamlined the process where, where she's trying to make it easy for all involved. And by using this collection, she suggests that we use this collection agency in order to expedite collection efforts. The way they're gonna do it is as soon as people are notified, as soon as there's proof of, that people were notified of the ticket by proof of mailing, basically, the judge will, and they fail to pay, or they fail to request a hearing, the judge will, or they do request a hearing and they don't show up, the judge will issue a judgment against them, as long as the village can demonstrate that the proof of mailing was sent to the individuals. And then upon entering the judgment, she will forward it immediately to the collection agency so the collection agency can jump on it right away. And they're a national company, from what I understand, and they're very well versed in this area. And, and they do add a little fee to their, for their services onto the collection amounts, you know, that, so that it wouldn't actually come out of our pocket. It would come out, they add a collection fee, basically, which I believe is about 20%, if I'm not mistaken. So right now, the maximum ticket price is, is, I think, 250, 275. So the most it would be is fifty bucks, basically, for a collection fee.
We have a large number that do not pay, do not do anything.
And one more thing, Mayor, if we don't take this action quickly, the, 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 one Judge DeGirano was, said if cases have been sitting there for more than six months and there's no activity on it, they'll be dismissed. So we don't want it, people, I mean, some cases are old, they'll be dismissed. But, but it's, a lot of it hinges on what GATSCO does. They have to provide the court with the proof of mailing, and they haven't, they're trying to work out the details in that regard to make sure that the court's happy with what they provide them. So the judge plans to implement this new procedure by November 1st. So if we could get this passed, you know, at the next meeting, that would be great. I don't really see any reason to delay it, unless you guys have questions for anybody.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
John, okay, right now, Garfield takes their fee. How would they get their fee if the collection agency's collecting this money? They take their fee, give us whatever we have coming, and then how do we compensate Garfield?
Well, how it works is we pay Garfield upfront. For every ticket that's issued, we have to pay $20 per month. So whether we collect upon that ticket or not, we have to pay the court cost. So every month, we get a bill from Garfield and reconciliation, you know, from Garfield with the money they collected, and the new tickets issued, we pay the $20 for the new tickets issued, and whatever's left over from what they've collected, we get the balance. Well, we get it back, basically, from us. So we have to front the money.
Okay.
No matter what, whether we collect it or not. So that's why we want to kind of get this implemented right away here.
And it closes the loop.
Yeah.
It's not fair to the people who do pay.
Right.
And, and, and people do nothing. They don't even contact the court. They just completely ignore the law. And without that, and that loop not closed, the court eventually dismisses it.
So if we collect on a ticket, we get the full amount less the collection agency fee back. So we recover our $20, and, you know, so that's, and then that's about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
In Article III of the contract, it says if, and it's in bold, capital, not capitalized, but in bold, if the client adds a 35% collection fee to a debt upon delinquency. So it, and then if the client does not add 35% collection fee. So is there anything extra we have to do to signify we want to add that collection?
I'll clarify that. This might be a form letter that they used there. Good point.
Okay, and, uh, not to put you on the spot, but are you familiar with the remedies that are then available to the collection agency for the delinquent payment?
Sure, and I should maybe back up a little bit. People who do protest the tickets, saying that, most of it, they don't understand that it's been ruled constitutional. And actually, in the notice that the judge sends out nowadays, they actually have it in the notice. The Supreme Court has said these camera tickets are legal, so, you know, don't raise that issue. But still, people don't understand or don't read it, and they still think that they have a legal basis to challenge the ticket, which they do if the officer made a mistake reading the plate, or the machine isn't calibrated, just like a regular speeding ticket. So say they challenge it, and, you know, most of them are, you know, asking for some sympathy due to their financial constraints, which, you know, the village has always been sympathetic towards people who are struggling. Even in our mayor's court, we, you know, usually cut, try to cut people a break if they truly, you know, if they need it. You know, we're not just in it for the money. It really is a safety issue as far as the mayor and I are concerned, you know. So, I mean, we, we, we...
And everybody here.
Yeah, at council, yeah, but we deal with it. But the, so we very, I handle those cases. So anybody, it's, every, once a month on a Friday, you have to go talk to these people. And I try to negotiate a settlement, obviously, try to make our, if they're really in dire straits, I, you know, I'd really cut them a break, but I do try to make a sum money, you know, even that. But if they're really struggling, you know, I'll cut them, at least recover our cost, you know, $20. If not, if not, I guess I'll try to, like, it's a 275 ticket, and someone's struggling. I'll say, well, how about a hundred bucks, you know. It's just a matter of negotiation. And I kind of feel out the people, see what their situation is, and try to make it fair to them. And, and so that's, so those people, if they pay, the case is dismissed. But if they don't pay, and they've sent a colle, or not just them, but if people don't respond the way they're supposed to, and it's sent to collection, the collection agency can, you know, put something on their credit, if they, credit report, if we, I don't think they're, I don't think they're gonna do that right at this point, but we might. I'll talk to them about that. Or they could, they really can't sue if, you know, if we decide, we already have a judgment against them, so it's a matter of collecting it. They can garnish their wages, they can attach their bank accounts. They could, you know, they have all those tools available to them, put a lien on their real estate. That, you know, it's kind of extreme for a $300 debt. I don't think we would do that. But, but, you know, we would probably, you know, we might, you know, I haven't really seen for these small amounts, these collection agencies going after, to be honest with you, going after bank accounts or garnishing wages. But they'll bother the heck out of you, that's for sure. But it is a possibility that they can, they can do that, which adds to the cost. Because if you're gonna garnish somebody's wages or their bank accounts, we have to front monies for the court costs so that, you know, to, to, and then the collection agency will try to recover that for us. So we haven't got that far along. We're just trying to get the collection agency on board right now so that they can send out letters and try to, you know, call these people and try to locate them and try to put some pressure on them to pay. So that's basically where it's at. We haven't really gotten beyond that just yet. But I guess if it, you know, if it's a large amount, it may be worth it for them to pursue some of those other avenues. But Newburgh has a very big, you know, a lot more revenue from these cases than we do. So I could ask them, see what they've done in the past. I don't think, I think I'm right. I don't think they go to those extremes. But I'll double check that. I have only just recently been introduced to the guy, and the judge is, why did they ride away here? So I will talk to him a little bit more. He did, we did do a Zoom with him, I think. We, you know, we had some discussions with him, but we haven't, I haven't talked to him recently. So I'll get more into it now that I know that, maybe I'm, I'm assuming you guys all want to get into it. There's no problem there. And I will give more information for you. Maybe I was thinking if you could maybe provide a summary letter of some sort, just like other department heads or other people do. I could ask for like a little memo, you know, kind of detailing a little bit.
We can do that. We can retouch based on it Tuesday.
Yeah, we could, yeah, I should have it for you by then.
I would like to ask for suspension of it, if we get that letter and you get a little more information based on that.
Mayor Colgar, yeah, I had at least one question, and that's with John. John, I think you said early on that once the judgment is rendered or the person fails to show up for the hearing, that the court will send notification immediately to the collection agency. So even if the person had, you know, whatever reason, whatever that reason might be, that they did not appear or they failed to pay, it's off to the collection agency. Is that, is that how you?
I do, I want to correct myself. The court does, I think, send them a reminder notice saying, hey, if you don't respond within so many days, you know, we're gonna have a judgment against you. But, yeah, they're all sent to the collection agency automatically then.
Okay. And my second question is, so in this, in the judgment, the judgment is issued, there's whatever the dollar amount is, the debt is, if, if the debt is then collected from the collection agency, does, what portion of that collection does the village keep? Or does that money come to the village, and the village reimburs the court, pays GATSCO? How does that whole piece work? I get, collection is successful, person sends in X dollars, what's the distribution process?
I think they'll add their 35% fee, you know, to it. So we get the net amount less the 35% fee, and then we, you know, let me think about that for a minute.
Do we still have to pay GATSCO?
Yes, yes. What we do is that the money comes, all the money comes to us. The grocery receipts come to us, and then we pay GATSCO their portion pursuant to the contract, which I believe is what, a third, I believe.
Yeah.
A third of the proceeds goes to them, and, and so we make two thirds. I'm not sure about the $20, or that plays in, but I think that comes out of our end, if I'm not mistaken.
But we can clear that up, too.
Yeah, I think we, I'm pretty sure.
I could even have Suzanne here. Suzanne is very well versed along with John on it, as far as that, because that is an end that kind of really get involved with, you know.
Yeah. And then my final question is, it would be for Suzanne, and I did touch base with Nicole on this a little bit yesterday, would be, can we identify just what that, what the gap is right now in terms of tickets issued, or, well, maybe not tickets issued, judgments rendered and judgments not, and then not paid. What does that really look like? Is it a 10%, 40% of people?
We have that.
Yeah.
Right now, I...
And the dollar amount, the dollar amount.
We have that, John.
Well, actually, Nicole's been asking the court if they could provide a summary of unpaid tickets, and they haven't, I don't think they've responded yet about that. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, I thought Suzanne had her record of it, but she needed to confirm it with the court. And we just didn't receive anything from the court. Well, I'll, let me...
We're trying to get a summary together.
Yeah, that's what we're trying, and we're, we want to make sure that our summary is correct with the court's summary.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, Jim.
I don't believe there's any judgments yet. Very few, but there's a handful. She just started doing it, literally, a month or two ago. There's not a lot yet. But there should be a report about it though.
It's been an ongoing thing with the court.
A lot of it has to do with GATSCO and providing proof of service. That's the key.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Under Article IV, it says, "After deduction of fees allowable by this agreement, MCOA will forward to the client the client's share of any amounts collected. Remittance to the client will be made by the fifth of the month for any amounts collected by the last day of the preceding month." So they'll take their cut and then forward that money to us by the fifth.
Actually, they may actually pay it directly to the court, I believe. I'm not sure about that. I think it would go through the court, but I'll double check that. Maybe I could have the representative here to answer some questions.
Yeah, we could do that, too.
That'd probably be best.
You see this, Diane?
Yes, I did.
Just ran out.
Did all.
I don't know how many years I've been using it. Diane's pen from when she ran for Congress. She passed on some really nice pens. I gotta admit.
That's why I use the new pen.
I've been using it. It just ran out today. I went to put a star by your point there, so we can answer some.
I need to get an angry Phil for him.
There you go, Diane, there you go.
Yeah, don't throw the pen away.
You must have had a good campaign budget, because these really are nice, and you can have some over there.
I got them so cheap, too.
I had the cheapest.
From work. I get everything wholesale, so, you know, it was...
See, mine were really junky, and nobody said they worked, but...
What Denny Linville used to say, would you like a cheap pen?
Any other questions related to that? We'll get those questions answered, and John will find out a little more on the timeframe on that, too.
I'll try to invite the gentleman.
Yes, that would be good. Any other questions from any residents, or the live stream relating to that item C? Okay, we'll move on to item B, ordinance 2025-13, amending and replacing Chapter 1276 Energy Conversion Systems with Chapter 1276 Alternative Energy Facilities. I know we went over that last week. George, was George, yeah, George was here, wasn't he?
Not last week. He was at the...
He was, we addressed it with the Planning Commission. What I, we, thanks for reminding me of that. What we addressed with COW meeting, it went before planning. Planning did review the ordinance and did, of course, George and Rob looked at it, and they felt to move it forward to council. If council was good with it, they were good with it for adoption. George did make a point to us, Ray, direct me about, all right? That we should get something in place, and we can always make changes to it or amendments to it if needed. But his suggestion was to get it in place sooner than later. Rob, did you have anything to add, or Ray?
No, I agree, we need something sooner than later.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I did have a couple of questions, and I thought George was gonna be here tonight to answer them, but maybe Rob would be able to answer it.
Yeah, 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 let's talk about it. I can always get you the answer, too, Diane. Or Rob can get you the answer.
I'm, one of the things with, it says with the solar panels, and...
Where are you at, Diane?
Wiring, H. One, two, three, fourth page. One, two, three, fourth page.
Fourth page, okay.
It says all the wiring's going to be underground. Now, if they're on the grid, well, that's with the wind, the wind turbines, but with the solar panels, if it's underground, say you want to put it on your barn in the back and you've got your solar panels back there and you're off the grid, you've got batteries then. So where do these batteries, nowhere did I see where these batteries are going to be put? Like in the buildings, next to the buildings? Do they have to have their own little shed?
No, I can't answer that. Usually they're kept inside typically for residential purpose, but I, I can't, I can't answer that.
Okay. And the solar panels, mostly, I've seen them a lot of cities. You put them on the south side of your house. So wherever that roof is going to be on the south side, whether it's a front yard, backyard, side yard. But will the solar panels be in line with the roof? Or are they going to be able to, like, say the bottom's three inches and the top now is 12 inches?
I know when we were.
To get the correct angle.
When we were originally discussing this, and I, I would have to find it, but the, I thought it was specified in here, the solar array, what specifically the angle of it.
I didn't see where it said angle of the roof that would follow the same.
But the angle of the solar array. There was something when we were, when in our working session, it was.
That's a big pile. There's a lot here, let's see if we can.
Three feet or something of, different than the, than the roof, no more of a three-foot pitch.
1276.07.
Eight.
Roof mounted solar arrays not exceed more than 36 inches above either the plane of the roof or the ridge line of the dwelling.
Right, that would be the top. But if you're just, if your roof is, there's my front of the house, and now my solar panel should be like three inches or whatever up from the shingles, the whole solar panel system.
Right.
It's not going to be, say it doesn't get the right angle because of trees or whatever. You're, you don't have to put it like that big of a gap, so it's obvious that these are solar panels sitting on a roof.
If you can, if you do, it can't be more than 36 inches.
So you go up to 36 inches.
So you can, you don't think that's excessive? 36 inches?
That's three.
That's three feet.
My personal opinion doesn't matter.
Yeah, oh, okay, okay.
Personally, yes, I think it is. I don't think we should allow them, but we took this code from other municipalities that, and enforcing it, and I guess there is some, you know, I trust Mr. Smirkin when it comes to this, there's certain things you have to allow. I mean, if you're trying to capture the sun's energy, you know, there's certain tolerances. I don't think it would look attractive on, on a house, but that's my personal opinion.
Okay. And then I had a question about, once a wind turbine's up, wherever it would be, I mean, I've seen them off a 480, 271, usually a business. It says on here on H, under lighting, design and noise, it says that it's not the electrical interference, so it's not supposed to interfere with the radio, television and wireless phones. We have a lot of problems with our wireless phones in the village already. Are we sure none of these big wind turbines are going to interfere? Or we wouldn't know till after it was up and then it's interfering?
Those are very good questions. The WEX portion of this, the wind energy, already exists in our code. So I don't know. I, we haven't had one erected here since I've been in charge of reviewing plans. However, I mean, that's already adopted in our code. I don't, I don't know if it would interfere. I don't know, I don't know what the process would be to make sure it wouldn't interfere.
Right, you wouldn't know till it was up.
Right.
Okay, same thing with like the noise. Now, if you have a wind turbine, I don't see a yard having it, but you never know.
Right.
If a business has it and it's supposed, you know, five acres of land and they got this wind turbine there and it's only, they get up to 55 decibels. Now, if that's backing a residential home and they're only supposed to get like 35 decibels, I mean, even that kind of a situation, depending on where this wind turbine got put, it could be bothering a homeowner with that buzzing noise or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So when it would be inspected on where it would be going at that point, it would have to have a variance or something?
I would have to say, like I said, wind energy already exists in our code. One hasn't went up since I've been at the helm of being responsible for this. But anything to be erected at that height would need to go through zoning or planning prior anyways.
Okay.
And so, like when I think wind turbine and we're talking about the stuff that would be next, like next to highway, like something 150 feet or better.
Right.
That would be, that would all go through planning prior, prior to being even permitted. It, it would never be permitted without going through.
Because it does say that every home or business surrounding it would be notified in advance to make sure they can.
Which, when you would go to planning, five, everything, everybody within 500 feet would be notified.
Okay.
And that's, that's an arm of just what we do for planning or what we do for VCA, depending on what the, what the meeting is for or the hearing. But something like a, a wind turbine, if you're, because we have in the, in Chapter 1270 of the industrial district, the largest flagpole or apparatus that you can have, I believe, is 70 feet?
I was going to say 75.
70, 75 feet. And anything over 75 feet needs to go. And then furthermore, cell towers are regulated. So anything of that substantial height would go through planning. Once, once it hits planning, everybody would have to be notified within 500 feet.
Okay.
Just by the process, that's, that's already.
I did see that and that would need to be definitely the notices going out and everything.
Right.
Because I, I, I just concerned about the decibels. Depending on where this wind turbine would get placed, hopefully there's other options if it is too close to a home.
Right. So, and then in Chapter 1258, Administrative Powers and Duties of the Plan Commission, noise, dust, glare, that's everything that they take into consideration when something comes before planning.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm glad you were here, Rob.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and there's, again, I'll reiterate, Council President Pro Tim Whedon, myself and, and Mr. Cowman was there when we worked on this. And we only worked on the solar array portion because there was no solar array. The WEX was already there and it was, it had been there for years.
Yes.
So maybe that we do need to look at that and, and tweak that, obviously, with, you know, we make some very good points and questions about that. There are other than, there's a business at the corner of Old Eight and 82. If you're headed south, it's on the left-hand side. I forget what is that building?
Dennis, it's Dr. White.
They have, is that your Dennis?
Yeah.
Okay, so he's got.
My daughter's. My daughter.
He's got. They're gone?
They're there, but they, they, they wore out or whatever.
Okay, but those are an example of a wind turbine. So we naturally think of those big ones by the science center and stuff. There are other types that are much smaller and, and as far as noise and height and all that stuff. But as far as your other question about the batteries in 1276.07, it mentions it a couple places, under the roof mounted and also, this would be under Paragraph A, and also in the ground mounted, it does say, "All accessory components in a battery," the battery would be an accessory component, "shall be located within the principal building or behind the front line of the principal building and within the side and rear building setback lines." Along with that sentence down, it says, "Accessory components shall be screened in accordance with Chapter 1298." So either in the building or beside it and screened.
I think what's really important, and this is what we talked about in planning is, and Diane, you know, we need to make, we can make those changes. We go with, right now, we don't have anything in place for the solar arrays, at least not to the detail even that we have here. So something comes before planning, zoning, we have very limited to reference.
And we had some go in.
Right, oh, no. And it's getting more and more popular because companies, rebates and different things and offering some, not deals, but working with, you know, the company offering and different companies, just getting more and more popular. So I, I really think it's a good idea we, that we pass this on suspension, get it in place. And then like George said, we can always review it and, and change it. But I think not having nothing in place is not a good thing. Would you, Ray, and I'm asking you only for, we probably spent more time in planning on it, just because I know we talked about it and then it needed to go back to planning to get their approval. And at that time, we, we had quite a bit of discussion on it and input from George relating to it and Rob.
Yeah, Mayor, I, yeah, as, as was stated by Mr. Smirkin, I also agree that it is best for us to get something in place and get it on the books. And then if we, if, you know, need to be tweaked or edited, modified, we can still do that. But it's important to get it, get it on.
I agree.
Yeah.
So I'm going to have that for suspension too for next Tuesday. Anybody from any of our residents or anybody watching the live stream have any questions relating to Item C? Item B? If not, that concludes our discussion on what's for legislation for next Tuesday. We have Item Six now, which is the Finance Update and Budget Discussion. I know, Rob, you're patiently waiting and I appreciate that and I know you need to move around a little bit. I'll just, real quick, I'm just going to read the cover page. Of course, Melissa, you want to read it in the record, but as always, Nikki always reads this cover page. It's our, Village of Walton Hills, our Finance Update for September 2025. Will also be in the Journal. Did you want to read it, Melissa? You want me to read it? For the month of September, Rita Collections were up 8.3% over last year and up 8.89 for the year to date. Spending is currently at 62.79% of the allocated budget for the year. September expenses exceeded revenue for all funds by $154,472.53. Year-to-date revenue exceeded expenditures by $686,495.12. The general fund revenue exceeded expenses by $36,126.92 for the year-to-date. In advance to the capital fund and payment for the 2025 preventive maintenance program increased expenditures for the month. The village received $9,836.59 in interest income, which is up just over 55% for the year-to-date. So that's just kind of Nikki's cover. I thought myself, Ray, Melissa and Rob had a conversation today. Nikki and Melissa had Rob scheduled for today to talk about his budget and some capital. Unfortunately, him and Nikki weren't able to spend the time they would have liked to yesterday because of unexpected emergency that Nikki had, that she had to address. So we thought it'd still be best to have Rob come, kind of talk about some things relating to his budget, some of the expenditures, at least get us thinking about that. And then when Nikki's back, we can dig a little more into the, the budget and individuals. The plan was, and Melissa, this is correct, was Rob was going to be here tonight, which he is, next week was going to be, I think, the chief and Natalie or one or the other.
I think the chief next.
Next week.
And, yeah, and Natalie next month.
Next month. So we're trying to get them all in. So hopefully we'll, we'll get back on schedule next week. If not, we'll talk about it and we'll make plans, but we're going to continue to work on the budget here. So I'm going to kind of, before we dig into this, have Rob just kind of talk about what he's shared with Nikki so far, what he, what he has. So go ahead, Rob.
All right. So what I provided counsel with was just a very, very small packet here out of the, for operational, which would be the budgets out of 1,000 in 2011 that I manage for the Service Department. These are the line items I've, just really made it brief here, what, what our 2025 budget was for these four line items and what I proposed, what I'd like for 26 and the amount of increase all the way to the right. Our overtime, we're over budget in that this year. I think we need to, Nikki and I spoke about this a while ago, I think we need to increase that to $40,000 for the season. Part-time wages, we don't have any part-time wages. We haven't really had any summer help for some time. The fire hydrants need painted. There's 396 of them. $25,000 gives me enough for four summer help people for the summer to paint the hydrants. Moving on to repairs and maintenance of building and land, I currently have a budget of $55,000. I'm looking for an increase of 37.8. We'll just move on. I have more explanation on that 37.8. And then operating supplies and material, which is my, which is the salt, our budget's 88, we need to increase that $10,000 for next year. We're already committed to our, with our purchasing cooperative with DOT. So we, we need to increase that, the $10,000. So if you flip the page over, you can see a breakdown, all the way to the right shows the repair and maintenance increase and what items would be covered in the repair and maintenance and why I'm asking for the increase. And it's broken down from between the service garage, the village hall, and in the right of way. The repair and maintenance items, we need American, American flags, I believe. We get two years out of them before they fade and $6,800. So what I've done for years is I somehow find it in my budget to cover these things. And we've gotten to the point, we've gotten to the point where I can't just find the money in the budget anymore. So I also haven't come before council. I've been at the helm as street commissioner for seven years now. This is my seventh year. And I have not come to council under this, under this fiscal officer, the prior or even the one before that. I haven't come for an increase on the budget. I make it work. And even when Nikki originally came to me this year, a couple of months ago, I'm like, we'll make it. I'm looking where I'm at. I look at where I'm supposed to be every month by percentage. Well, then I get curveballs and then I'm trying to cover stuff. I haven't come for an increase in operations in seven years. Just a little note that I find interesting is in 2016 and 2017, I believe, and at least knowing a little bit of our history, before I was sworn in or appointed, I'm sorry, in 2016, the Service Department budget was reduced by 12% to try to make ends meet. In 2017, it was reduced 18%. So right before I was appointed, we reduced the budget by 30%. And I've made it work for seven years without asking for an increase. So going back to page two, that's why I'm asking for.
And things haven't gone up since then either, correct?
No, I think it went down. That's why I've, I've been lucky. I've been lucky. But, uh, that's why I have the items in repairs and maintenance. Um, capital improvements, the middle column is, and we spoke about this last year. I was able to get the old fire alarm working at the event center. It's outside the fire department for the year. We need to do it next year. That, that's a capital improvement that needs to be done. Um, the other two capital items I'm asking for, they need done as well. They're just not as important as a fire alarm. So, if we get to that point, you know, you're gonna have other directors, you know, pitching their whatever to you. I mean, you get to that point, you know. The fire alarm's the most important on this list. Then, and I just plugged in our, our grant monies that we have, that we will, uh, move forward, um, and put the, replace the roofs down at the event center next year. On those items.
Rob, just to get back to those, so that roof replacement for the event center, uh, that grant will cover that?
Yes.
Okay, so there won't, there won't be any additional, uh, uh, funds from the village for that? The grant will cover that and it'll also cover the, the replacement for the old garage up there?
Yes.
Okay.
So we stretched that one for this roof and the, the two roofs down there.
Okay. So I'm just saying that, that ninety-one thousand will cover that. There won't be, we, we don't need to add anything to that to complete those two projects there?
As, as of today's prices, no.
Or what?
I mean, as long as something hits the fan, we're, we're fine.
Right, right, that's fair. Okay.
Um, I guess moving on, the next page, I, I shared with this briefly with, uh, infrastructure committee. The equipment replacement, um, so it's kinda, it's kinda spelled out. I mean, I'm, I'm proposing, uh, getting rid of, or I should, should say replacing our existing chipper, one of our leafers and one of our dump trucks, um, with a chassis-mounted leaver and getting a new chipper. So with those items, those, the, the chassis-mounted leaver and the new chipper, and the chassis-mounted leaver will work with the chipper as, also. It has a chipper door on it, so we can use the same piece of equipment. We'll be using it year-round. Or at least for the two seasons with that. So the total's three fifty-nine, four twenty-seven. To, to, to get a muni lease for that, the payments are eighty-one thousand dollars a year. I reached out to Northeast Ohio Regional and because we can keep twenty-two to twenty-five hundred cubic yards of leaves out of the streams, they'll give us a hundred thousand dollars towards the purchase of this equipment. We have a fund and I've talked to Nikki about this. I wish she was here because she could probably explain it better than I could. But our state highway, our twenty twenty-one fund, uh, gas excise tax that's sent to, it's for use of street right-ofways and streets and repairs, maintenance and repairs. So we put a small portion out of what we get into my, into the, the street's budget every year. And for that portion, because it's a gas excise tax that doesn't get used, it rolls over into the next year. So we currently have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this fund. Um, I'd like to use a hundred of it and put it towards this purchase. You shake all those numbers out, your annual lease payments for five years is forty-one thousand dollars a year. You own the equipment when you're done with it, after the five years.
That's for both pieces of.
That's the chassis-mounted leaver and that's the chipper as well. That's for both cases. And the last page is just repairs we've made since twenty-two on these pieces of equipment. I didn't get, I put this last page together late this afternoon. I didn't get to get into the leaver that we're replacing. I know we've replaced the clutch on that. It's, it's a different type of clutch system, a new leaver. We replaced a clutch a couple of times and there's been other, a couple of major things on it. I don't have those numbers. I didn't have them with me at this office. This other stuff I did. So, the truck we're replacing, I mean, just from twenty, twenty twenty-two, I mean, we've, we've done some substantial repairs in it. Um, this year, we're going to the, the chipper. This year we replaced this cou- cou- coupling housing between the motor and, uh, um, the component that works the chipper. We were down two weeks without a chipper in the metal chipping season. It cost us five thousand dollars in rent and the repair cost us eight thousand dollars. So, in total, I mean, into, you know, ballpark in total since twenty-two, we've thrown fifty thousand dollars at this stuff. Plus, you know, whatever rentals we own.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
Rob, do I understand this correctly? Your figure here to buy the equipment and then you're minusing two hundred thousand and that would, if we leased it, it would be forty-one thousand a year for five years?
Well, yes.
Okay, so now if you take your two hundred thousand from the three fifty-nine, we've got a hundred and fifty-nine. What do you think you can get for the machines that, the equipment that you're going to be eliminating? You're gonna sell off, auction off?
You, you know, I don't know.
I mean, if you got like fifty, then you're only asking for a hundred thousand.
So what we're not doing in, in, in any department is rotating any of our equipment. So what we're holding on to right now is these trucks are just twenty-one-year-old trucks and stuff. We're all mounted to this stuff for dear life. And actually, since we're not rotating equipment, you know, get a new truck, dump truck and then move this, so that truck, two thousand four F five fifty, that's gonna actually move over and replace our cold patch truck.
Okay. So these aren't going up for auction?
The, I will, we, we would be auctioning the leaver that we're replacing. That would, that would be auctioned. But I, it would be my recommendation, the chipper we would keep and the, uh, and the truck we would take and, and we would, because, couple of things. I hate paying rental for something that we own. And that, like, stung for me to pay five thousand dollars for a chipper, but I can't tell you how many times my phone rings if we don't have that chipper on the road during chipping season. Anyways, going back to what you were saying, the leaver would get sold. I don't recall what our last old leaver sold for. In nineteen, we replaced one, sold the old one. I wanna say we got eighty-five grand.
I was gonna say, it wasn't a real lot.
No, it wasn't enough to talk about. I'd keep the chief, uh, chipper. I'd rotate the, uh, W fourteen to be the new cold patch truck. Our cold patch truck is, um, wrong.
Well, good job on getting the two hundred thousand off. I mean, that's, that's really good.
It is, but I agree, Diane.
Thank you.
Mayor Collier?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, just had one comment and then a question that is, might, the question may be for Nikki, uh, or Rob maybe, or Melissa may be able to answer. Just first, just thanks for, uh, putting together this very, uh, comprehensive, uh, information package, uh, for us tonight. Uh, then the question is for the, um, state highway fund, the twenty twenty-one fund. Uh, uh, other uses that that fund can be used for, any, any idea? If not tonight, that's fine. We can wait to Nikki. Any other uses?
Maintenance for any roadways or right-ofways, or anything that maintains the roadways or right-ofways.
Okay, so it's the actual maintenance or the equipment therefore, thereof, sort of?
Not maintenance of the equip.
No, the maintenance of the roads or the equipment needed to do the maintenance?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's clear.
Yes, there was, and there, not that, there, not that there was confusion, but somebody asked for clarity and, and I did. I actually don't have it here, but I looked it up in the O A C and it has its reference in the O R C. That is specifically those gas, those taxed, those taxed dollars can go to the maintenance of the right-ofway, maintenance of the roads and signage, guardrails and any of that stuff. That's what that, that, that fund is for.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Rob, the maintenance of the roads, would that include striping?
Not out of this one. I need this one for this equipment.
Oh, I completely agree.
You can talk to Gilati.
No, I, and last year, Rob, you said, hands up, I'm taking everything off the table.
Right. Right. Not only did I not ask for anything for seven years, last year, I said, don't worry about it. Never mind, I'm not coming to you with anything. So, anyways, this is, and, and I know, listen, I've settled down over the years. The thing is.
You've settled down?
I, I have settled down. I, I, I let you know what we need and I understand you guys have a very difficult job with all the departments, you know, that, you know, we've been, everybody, everybody's run, been running, tightening their belt and doing, trying to do more with less and everything else, but, you know, I mean, next year I'm gonna be sitting here asking for another cloud truck. It is what it is. And, and whatever is approved and whatever we can do, i- i- we will, so. I have settled down.
Well, this is very comprehensive and I think it's, I think you did a great job with it and I appreciate it.
Thank you so much and simple. Easy to read, very simple.
Anybody else have any questions for? For Rob? Would you wanna add anything, Rob, about anything else maybe that you don't have on here? Uh, but maybe you don't, you don't foresee it this year, but maybe next year or anything? I know you did just mention one cloud truck just now to us, probably for next year, you'll probably be.
Yeah, cloud truck for twenty-seven, which, and that's a, that's a big one. That'll, that'll be our last ones, I think, were one seventy, a hundred and seventy. We're gonna be knocking on the door.
That door we just bought?
Yeah. Hundred and ninety or better, probably.
You know, and Rob, you, you do a great job managing that department and we got good employees that do do a good job taking care of that equipment under you. With your leadership and, and, you know, our, it's amazing how old some of our vehicles are and they don't look that old.
No.
And then when people hear us or talk about them and they find out a lot of our vehicles are over twenty years old or you got a backhoe that's forty years old and it looks like it just rolled off. It isn't just because it happened to be that way. It's because of the maintenance of what George does and what the guys do and, of course, having a nice garage where we keep things inside certainly helps.
Most, most definitely, Mayor, and, and that's why I like, we're, I would like to move W fourteen to replace the cold patch truck. The reason the cold patch truck lasted so long is because it's kept inside. And it's kept warm, the cold patch is kept warm. And W fourteen, we've resealed the engine, replaced that engine. I mean, there's all this work we've done to that truck. If you look at it, the other thing that we do is we, we designate the equipment. That, W fourteen, the only thing it does is pull that chipper. You look at that truck, I mean, it, there's no rust in that truck. It doesn't go out in the winter. If it, I mean, and, and so, that's what prolongs these, that's what, you know. I don't know, you know, and the thing is, is it's tough to come up with, I don't know if the new equipment's gonna last as long as the old equipment.
Well, that we know won't happen.
I mean, because, I mean, you're looking at, you know, a couple of these trucks, twenty, twenty-two years old, I mean, I don't know if you can get twenty-two years out of a new truck. But anyways, that, that's hopefully to, to the point where we're, you know, pickup truck is ten or twelve years, you could use your turn, you know, and, and that's the thing. When we were trying to jump back on the, on the plan was like, when we tried to jump, it was like two thousand and fourteen was our, was, uh, we purchased a handful of trucks in two thousand and fourteen. Those are up for replacement, but they don't even rank on the list to get replaced yet because we're behind with everything else, so. I present to you the most important year at that time.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, John.
While I have you here, did you have a chance to look at the email I had sent you?
No, I was putting this together.
Oh, all right.
No, I, I saw you send me a grant email. I will look into it. Um, yeah, anything we can do, grant-wise, I'm always down for that.
Yeah, it's from the state and they're giving a lot away.
Yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
We did close the loop, Brian and anybody else on, and I mentioned your name and Rob and, uh, you were a big part of that for the, the van. You know, that grant for that. Uh, there was a meeting last week, uh, Rob attended and kind of give some, uh, vehicle information, fill out a form. And Nikki and Melissa and John were, they, so that loop was closed, if anybody was wondering, and, uh, we'll just wait. It is, uh, it doesn't look like we're gonna get the money until pretty late in the next year.
It's, it's a lengthy process.
Yeah.
Uh, I mean, they, they said, you know, I'm sitting there for the meeting and I'm, I'm ready to write down whatever, you know, I don't want to drop the ball and like, all right, you fill this out and send it back to us, you know, within two days and then we'll get the contracts out to you late spring, early summer next year. I'm like, what?
Yeah.
Wow.
So.
At least we got it, though.
Yeah, we, we have it.
It's free money.
Right. And we're, just to let you know, because you might've seen that, there was quite a bit. That was our first time for that type of grant, so you had to attend, uh, like an orientation.
Workshop.
A workshop related to that.
Better you than me.
I, I gotta.
We tried calling you, but you weren't answering, probably.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just general, generalities, I know Nikki isn't here.
That's fine.
To answer some of these questions.
We're gonna put it on Melissa. You're fine.
Um, the, uh, first of all, I'm gonna, I, I, I think this.
Tell us where you're at and then we.
Okay, well, uh, as far as Rob's stuff, uh, I'm gonna do my best to, uh, to get this equipment, uh, to, to figure out how to get this equipment. I think, uh, Rob did do an outstanding job con- contacting, taking the bull by the horns and contacting.
Good night, ladies.
Good night. Any R S D and the state highway fund looking into that and, um, uh, getting us that money. So, we shouldn't look at that lightly. That, that's a significant, significant savings for that, for that equipment. My concern in generalities for the budget, uh, the one that Nicole sent out for the, the budget for twenty twenty-six, proposed general fund budget. Uh, now, maybe Melissa can answer it on, uh, let's see, where am I? The second to last page, where it says, uh, transfers out, uh, it's like, uh, one, go up from the bottom, maybe one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven lines, capital. We're transferring two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and seven dollars from the general fund to capital. That's how I read that. So, according to, if I go by the, by the other document that was, uh, submitted to us, uh, at the end of this year, projected in capital would be four hundred and six, a little over four hundred and sixteen thousand, if I'm reading it right. And I'm just looking at it now. So you add the two eighty to the four sixteen, there'd be six hundred and ninety-six. there'd be six-hundred-and-ninety-six-three-eighty-two in the capital fund for next year, is, is that covering the road projects that we've got going on, and right now, at the top of my head, I can't think of whether that is, how she got that two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to transfer out of there, what, what exact capital, because there's nothing in, in here under capital, it's all zero.
I have that one, I have the answer, no hope, but I have forty, I have some final.
Okay, and, and what concerns me, going back to, uh, not only Mr. Kalman's, and again, I'm gonna try to, to, I think this is worthy to get, uh, what's concerning is the bottom line, the fund balance for twenty-six, uh, if we go by this with very scant capital projects, ending fund balance, general fund balance, is only four-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. That's, uh, and we can probably take off close to a hundred thousand dollars from that, just from this conversation with Mr. Kalman, and I'm sure other, other departments may have some other things, maybe I'm highballing that instead of lowballing it, and I know that Nicole is very conservative in projecting income, so I'm expecting these numbers, like they have this year, to look better, much better, towards the middle of the year, uh, I just want to state my concern, and, and, uh, with that, with the general fund, and maybe Nicole can shed some light for us next week, um, on what her, what her outlook is, if we accept all, all of these.
Did you see the footnotes on the last page?
Yeah.
Because there are-
Yeah, I, I scanned them, I didn't, each fund balance, whatever, prior year's fund balance.
So she's got footnote twenty-five and twenty-six in the transferred out column?
OPWC loans? Okay, I'll have to read into that more, and, yeah, thank you. And, so, so, this does, is that what you're saying, this does include?
I cannot speak to that for sure, but I just didn't know if you had seen-
I was saying to Brian-
If you had seen the footnotes that she did include on the last page.
Yeah.
The, and I guess what's important, uh, when we did, I didn't speak to Nikki, was more text today because, uh, of everything she has going on, and at that time, Melissa, she is, you know, she does, she moved things around and did quite a bit, she asked, she said, Mayor, uh, if you can move this up to the next meeting, um, for her, and I said, well, we are gonna, I just texted her back, we're gonna touch base, I do have Rob, we do have Rob coming to discuss that, and, uh, you know, and, and so I, and I'm saying that because I think it's important, like you said, Brian, to, uh, really have her explain it, so we, we're not looking at something that we can-
Right, and, and, exactly.
You know, you know what I mean, I, we need to fully understand how she came up with those numbers, um, so that we can actually make some really good decisions, uh, based on that. And, uh, between payroll and the other things, Melissa, she gets part of this, but you're not as involved in this as Nikki is personally with the department is, but you guys know that, I just-
Sure.
Kind of, for our residents and anybody watching. And if for some reason Nikki wasn't able to make it next Tuesday, then we will have to dive into it a little more and, and pick her brain a little bit and stuff, so we could have some of those answers, uh, but I'm sure things will be better, and, uh, if not for next week, moving into November, we might have to just, really, that first and second COW meeting, maybe put our nose to the wheel, you know, even more than we do, so. And I think with all our prayers and everything, I think everything's gonna work out. Anybody have anything kind of general, Melissa, did you want to add anything relating to that, or did Nikki convey anything to you? Okay. What we do know is that Nikki's got a very inclusive finance report here, which she always puts together, and, uh, it's all here in front of us, we just need her to interpret it for us a little bit. Thirty-something pages and very detailed, um, so, and Rob did a great job, uh, explaining those items she had. So with that, any other, everybody else pretty good with where we're at, I'm just gonna kind of recap, uh, what we're gonna do, um, for the issuance of notes, uh, we're pretty good, everybody's, there was no questions for that, we'll have that for suspension, uh, resolution twenty-twenty-five-dash-thirty-seven, the reemployment, we were, we were good there, is gonna ask for suspension on that, have that on the agenda, we have resolution twenty-twenty-five-thirty-nine, authorizing Mayor to enter the contract with the Minnesota Collection Association of America for the collection of our delinquent traffic tickets, there's some questions John has that you, uh, that we all would like answered, so we'll, we'll work on that, right, John?
Yes, sir.
And, um, then we have, uh, and hopefully we get those questions answered, see how the timeframe is, um, I might ask for suspension on that, or, you know, and, you know, if you guys are good with that, and your questions are answered there, and then we have item D, which is ordinance twenty-twenty-five-dash-thirteen, uh, that's the, uh, energy conversion systems, alternative energy facilities, uh, I would like to ask for suspension of that, to get that on the books, um, and then we continue our discussion, uh, how do you feel, do you, just want to have the finance inside the council meeting, let's say pass legislation first, uh, so if anybody's watching, or, then we can get that done, and then have finance, or do you want to have a separate COW meeting, uh, before the council meeting?
Mayor, I think it's fine to have, uh, finance inside of, inside the meeting.
Yeah, I, I feel that same way, and we've really talked about the legislation quite a bit, besides the few items for the collection, I think that probably would go pretty fast, everybody's feels pretty good about that, and then, um, we can continue our discussion with the budget. Okay. So the agenda's gonna look a lot like it is today. Any other, um, anything else under other business that anybody would like to discuss?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank everyone that came out for the haunted hayride, and thank you, Rob, for your crew to get everything up, and, and, everything looked really good, I mean, we had a great time, and, anyone that missed it's gotta come next year, they just keep getting better and better, but, thank you, and for all the hard work getting it all set up, and, and the kids seemed to have a great time up at the pavilion and everything, and, and I enjoyed, I didn't scare anyone, but, being the friendly, the friendly ghost.
There was, well, I don't know who was, there was a ghost, which I thought was really cool, inside the grave, graveyard.
That was me.
I think so.
Oh, thank you. I know one kid thought I was a robot.
But just the way you did it and everything in your, it, it just was really, really neat, and each year they always added, and Natalie, Mary, Ronnie just did a great job, and Jennifer, I know you, Fred were up there, Ray, um, Diane, I know Ryan, you, you had the work, or you had a family thing going on too, but, um, there was a lot of kids up there, a lot of little kids.
They had a good time.
It was really something, um, not that us big kids don't mind it, I enjoyed it, enjoyed the hayride and everything, but, you know, sometimes we keep having this vision that our, our village is just, uh, a lot of seniors, which it is, which, you know, most of us are, um, which is a, a good thing, but it's also a, a good thing to know that there's a lot of new children in the village, they're not all just grandchildren of residents, or people who just know, there's a lot of resident little kids, which is really nice, just to keep the things you talked about and everything when you were younger and stuff, and our kids have seen, were seeing it.
Yep.
Jack, wasn't there a lot of, probably the most kids I've seen in a while, maybe because the weather was beautiful, but even racing, at the playground, it was like, almost like wild, and I, my two granddaughters were there, and I was like, having a hard time keeping up with them, like, oh, you know, this, that girl kind of looks like her, I mean, you know, I wasn't doing a very good job at times, lucky my wife and other people were up there, there was a lot of kids, you know, Freddie was just a lot of kids, so, I know they appreciated you, Diane, it was, it was really nice.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say too? I thought it was really nice, and almost nostalgic, how we just had a couple of snacks that were out there for everyone to help themselves too, I mean, I know people like food trucks, but this is what we did, just small, simple snacks, you know, parents don't have to go reaching into their pocket for an eight-dollar hamburger or anything, and it, it felt nice to have that there.
Good, um, um, that was, came out of some of the meetings and stuff, I, I know Diane, you've been instrumental in that, and, and talking and stuff, yeah, it was, it was nice, and, uh, that was nice, the weather was nice, and we do have, a week from this, uh, Sunday, we do have the Halloween, um, uh, party up at the, up at the event center.
Yeah, they're, they're doing a trunk-or-treat first, and afterwards a trick-or-treat street, so you guys can participate in both or either.
Yeah, you don't come up there and pass out candy, and, you know, that's, that's a fun thing to do, you don't have, necessarily have to have any kids or know any kids, interact with them by doing that, or just coming up there, and, see, they've had some great entertainment, uh, up there, from these magicians to different things, they had one year, they had to have magician deckard, gentleman, he put a, what was it, a piece of fruit in the one kid's mouth, like a carrot or something, he took the cards, he holds a world record for flinging cards.
He was on America and America's Got Talent.
Oh, was he?
Wow.
He took a card, he flinged it, and he cut, he'd cut pieces off that carrot, it was unbelievable, a playing card could fling it.
My kid wouldn't be holding that carrot.
It was just, you got, anybody remember that, it was, it was really-
I need him to take a few inches off of that.
Yeah. Whoops. I'd be afraid he'd hit my head and I'd have more hair behind me, uh, whoops, then I'd have to go bald, I mean, more bald than I might have to shave.
You can get Brian one of those baby carrots to hold.
I'd like to thank you guys for, uh, coming up and giving your presentation, too, I think, um, all the administration council appreciates, and, and I'm sure you're gonna get more residents getting involved in it, um, it's just nice that we offer other things, and we appreciate the time you put in, leading the way, uh, for it, because, um, probably if you didn't start it, if I wouldn't be there, it always takes-
Thank you all very much.
It always takes that person, and then people like you, Carol, and, and Jack, to support it, um, so, we'll continue, we'll look into, see what we can do if there is anything, but, anything else outside of monetary thing, you know, we're, we're here, and, you know, it's, uh, you want to come up to one of the events and put a little table out or something, that's, that's always welcome, you know, it's, it is about our village, which is a great thing, so, anybody else have anything they want to add under, go ahead, Mayor?
Yes, Mayor, uh, just want to put it on the radar, um, Councilman Spicenigle first approached me last week, uh, regarding the month of November, and our meeting dates, our, the first Tuesday in November is Election Day, second Tuesday in November is Veterans Day, so, we could talk about, perhaps talk about a little more next week, just want to put it out there, especially for those, uh, those, the candidates that are actually, you know, do what we do, we know what we typically do on Election Day, uh, however we know it is, it is November, two meetings in a row, so let's, next week, just kind of kick around our thoughts on November fourth, November eleventh, uh, alternate dates, earlier meeting times, something like that, but just give you time, guys, some time to think about it, uh, look at your schedules, because some people may not be able to do alternate dates, uh, just talk about it a little more next week.
Do you have that? I, I know, me and Ray talked about, just briefly, it could even be like, that Tuesday for Election Day, if we wanted to have it earlier even, you know, because I know some people, like, I, I know for Jennifer, uh, Brian, and Fred, you know, if you were planning on, you know, being out somewhere or something, but, uh, or an alternate date, or, you said, how nice, we got three people running unopposed, it's nice, you know, size, it's quiet, and-
Oh, my God, it's such a relief.
But, but it's also a testament to, to this council, you three too, so, um, I certainly recognize that, and appreciate that, and I think the residents do, too, so.
Congrats.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Anything else to add under other business?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I know we're doing budget stuff this year, but, so maybe the beginning of the year, we could start to look into, um, possible ordinances or resolutions about businesses that are located in homes, do you have their own trash service? We are supplementing the trash fees for the residents, and we've talked about this before, and there are places that are putting out dozens, literally, of garbage cans, that exponentially raises the amount of trash that is collected, which affects all of us, so it's just something to think about, and possibly also, um, something about homes, just thinking offhand, homes need to be occupied at least six months out of the year, we have, this wouldn't affect really everybody, we do have snowbirds, it wouldn't be for that, but some of the business, or not businesses, homes that are quite unkempt, um, and there's no one living there, um, just something to start to think about, something that we can do to make sure those homes don't reflect in our village like that. And I am gonna talk to the chief, too, about, uh, something for next year, too, concerning like dirt bikes, e-bikes, scooters, a lot of communities are doing that, so that there are some sort of regulations that they have, age restrictions, safety precautions, like helmets and things like that, and speed limits.
And that, and that's fine, in fact, um, e-bikes, I just received, uh, legislation from another community, uh, with mayors I meet once monthly, uh, we requested, one mayor did, uh, put e-bike regulation in, in place, uh, for a large community that is really affected, because it's, uh, very dense, and, and a lot of, uh, streets with a lot of people riding, so I do have that, uh, legislation, uh, so we got a boilerplate, I know I, I could do with someone, probably gonna have, uh, the chief, Rob, and then maybe George look at it a little bit, so we're pretty, we, we have something-
Good.
-for that, uh-
Yeah, I know other communities had already started to put stuff together, and that made, made sense, I've seen them several times on the road, they, the ones that I've seen, knock on wood, nobody was doing anything crazy, but it's better to have something in place ahead of-
I've seen a lot of those. What, what we, you know, and that, sometimes the, the mayors and managers association tries to do that, but I know our group, we're trying to start, bring something together that's a little consistent, so, you know, what, one community, especially the communities that surround us, we're kind of enforcing it the same way, and it, it, it just makes it better to enforce, and it keeps it from, oh, I was, in, in Valley View, I could do that, and then I come over here, and I didn't know that, because I, I, and even though I was in Walton Hills, where it's consistent, and it applies, so, yeah, so that's a good thing, um, and we've had a couple of e-bikes situations here already, believe it or not, on, on Northfield Road, yeah, but if you go into like a Parma, or even Bedford, I know you have a little, you know, where you have the population's a little more condensed and, and stuff, and Garfield, you're seeing a lot more of the e-bikes.
I saw a guy on a-
Speed is a real issue, too, you know, and that, you know.
I saw a guy on one of them, uh, Razor two-wheel things, just today, and, I mean, he was going fast.
Yeah.
Well, next year, I'm getting a- Well, next year I'm getting a Vespa scooter, and I'm gonna ride with you and my son on your Harleys, I'm gonna-
You're sick.
Leave him on the dustbin.
He wants to win the award in his hair.
We'll start a gang.
I'm, I'm probably, I'm probably okay with, I don't know if Daniel's gonna stay with me. I mean, uh, if you're riding with your father, you want him to at least be cool.
Don't ride it to the county line, please.
Yeah, there you go. Anybody have anything else for other business, or?
I know.
Any residents have anything, anything to add before we ask for adjournment? I'd like to ask for an adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn today's committee, the whole meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Vote on the motion. Jennifer Allen?
Yes.
Diane Canzoni?
Yes.
Fred Nielsen?
Yes.
Raymond Whedon?
Yes.
Ryan Spitznagle?
Yes.
Okay, meeting adjourned at nine twenty-five. Thank you, everybody.